Seems funny when we-
Call the order, the Lake Mills City Council meeting for October 7th, 2014. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please, Betsy.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Any corrections to the minutes from the September 16th? If not, I entertain a motion of acceptance.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And Betsy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondents, we'll start with Steve.
Quite weak, nothing really to report.
Ms. Fritsch?
In your packet, you received a petition from, not official, but from the residents of Rock Lake Manor regarding the sidewalk along the side of Century. And I was there for their potluck, and I told them that I would make sure that it was mentioned in my report here. So I am making sure you all got that, and we can chit chat about what we can do about that.
I talked to Steve on that, and it's a done deal.
It's a done deal.
Good work.
See? Good job, ladies and gentlemen. Okay.
Mike?
It was a very quiet week for me, nothing in email or calls.
And the same for me. Brings us to item five, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda, unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until that hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting. Has been called to order, and the state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. So please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name, address, when starting, and fill out and sign the sheet provided on the podium. And Bill, are you?
This gentleman, he's-
Okay, Tom, please.
He's working in the neighborhood, so let him get-
All right.
He's working right here.
Just go up to the thing-
Step up to the podium.
And sign in on the sheet there when you're done.
I've signed it already.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay. So I'm Tom Hoynaski, I'm running for Assembly. I wanted to introduce myself to you. I'm running to, primarily to get all this Texas and out-of-state money out of our politics. I want to get a bipartisan commission like they have in Iowa to do our redistricting, so we don't have all this crazy gerrymandering going on.
Yes.
And I want to work to get all that shared revenue money that they pulled out of our local communities and schools to pretend they balance the state budget only to have our local roads go downhill, and our schools start hurting because we don't have enough money coming into the schools for equipment and teaching. So those are some of the reasons why I'm running.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening, I'm Steve Pierce, the executive director of Rock Lake Manor for the last couple of months, the third director there in 25 years. I live at 409 College Street, and Diane Fritsch, who is on our Board of Commissioners, invited me to come tonight just to introduce myself. And I've already been working a little bit with Steve Wilkie on some issues, and I'm very pleased to be here. We have 63 units of affordable housing for seniors and persons with disabilities, and it's a very beautiful resource for the city of Lake Mills. And I'm always willing to answer any questions any of you may have about Rock Lake Manor.
Thank you, Steve, and welcome.
Thank you.
And I heard nothing but good things about you so far.
Well, it's good to hear. Thank you.
Bill Beckman, Judge Advocate for the American Legion, 855 East Lake Street, number 51. Under the recommendation of a friend, I am not making a proposal at this time, I'm strictly bringing you up to date with what is happening as far as the flooded Hamburger Stand is concerned. I may run over the three minutes, but I ask your indulgence. The financial losses from the flooding of the American Legion Hamburger Stand has been developed and submitted to the Post Attorney for examination and evaluation before submitting it to the Post and the city's insurance companies. The flooding of the stand, which also contributed to severe damage in our neighboring shops, caused a loss from physical damage and a loss of income in excess of $29,000 to the Post. This loss, if not rectified, will have a major impact on the operation of the Post and the organizations and groups it serves in the community, state, and nation. Unknown to many, there are over 25 of these groups this Post supports, such as the scouting programs, scholarship programs, educational opportunities such as Boys and Girls State and the National Oratorical Competition. Prior to the present slider facility, a four-wheel wagon was drugged each week to a spot between the two buildings where the present stand sits. It was drugged back in its strange place after its Friday night's use. In the early '50s, the present permanent structure was built, and it has served the community well. However, now that the crisis has arisen, now might be the time to build a new, more functional structure. I liken it to our grandfathers eliminating the little house in the back of the house and installing indoor plumbing. If you have ever worked in the present stand in the summertime with outside temperatures approaching 100 degrees, fans and air conditioning of sorts going full blast, you can equate it to the little house mentioned before. At the present time, the Post has not decided what action to take. We believe there are several options available to us, and we are studying both the costs and the requirements for rebuilding the present stand or locating elsewhere. I feel certain the city council will help us achieve what decision we come up with, considering the asset, the stand, and the income from it, from the American Legion, has been to the community. I'm certain they realize we don't ask for anything from the city, and haven't asked for anything from the city. We have only contributed to make Lake Mills a better community. After carefully studying all of the options open to us, we will be happy to inform the council, and if needed, seek their advice, help, and approval. Thank you, Bill. Seeing no others for public comment, public comment is closed. We'll go to item six, the city manager's report. Steve?
I put in an email about the Catlin Drive issue, and we've been working with the state. I think that we feel that we have a decent solution. We may be able to improve on it a little bit, we've been working with some engineers on that, but I don't think that the request is in the best interest of that intersection. So unless you guys decide to do something, we're going to continue relatively down the same road we're moving right now. We may make a few changes to that intersection.
Little hard to hear you.
Cat, there was an email in there about Catlin Drive, and we have been working with the state on that project from the beginning. We originally were proposing three lanes. They asked us to go with two, and we complied with that. The north lane, we made a right turn only, the left lane is a left turn or straight through. The right turn lane only, we made wide, so that the school buses could get in there and navigate that turn, turning north up the street. There was some complaint that people were coming out of the left lane and crossed onto Milton Street, and were coming over on the wrong side of the street. We've been working with the state, we believe that what we have is the best option. We may slide it more to the north, tightening up the right-hand turn lane only, and then making it so that that one lane is closer to the lining up with the lane on Milton Street, but that's probably the most we would do at this point in time. Other than that, that's all I have on that one. We are going to start removing the concrete at Madison and Fremont for the crosswalks, probably this week, maybe another week or two before the actual lights go up. We have received a letter of substantial completion on-
Madison and Fremont? College?
College, yeah, college, right. I knew I was wrong. The Birch Street, the new extension, we have written a letter of substantial completion, so that project is what we consider at least 90 percent complete. It's probably more than that.
Is the electric a lot of there now?
Yep, electric's out of there.
Okay.
That project is basically complete. There might be some striping on the streets, obviously the grass has to finish growing.
It's really nice having that street, saves us from going all the way to A and so forth. I like that street.
I noticed that there's a lot of traffic on it already, so it's a pretty popular route. That's complete, same with Catlin, that one is now complete, or what we call substantially complete. We hold a certain amount of their payment, and what is it, two and a half percent? We hold until a warranty period, and then we make the final payment. So everything's starting to wrap up. I note that Pinnacle is now paved all the way through, and I saw that the sidewalk strings were up, so it looks like they're going to finish the sidewalks before the end of the year. One of our big issues is getting our water main break asphalt patches in, along with the parking lot that Wallace Park completed. So those are probably some of the main things that we're trying to finish up right now. I note that they've already started vacuuming leaves, and brush pickup, the notice on brush pickup is on the website and in the newspaper.
And what is the, same as usual?
Yes.
Which is third?
No, because we only do it twice a year now, as a free pickup, he picks a specific date that's generally closest to, we want to make sure that we do it after everybody's out of the trailer parks, and we feel that some of the more substantial weather towards the end of the year is done. So it's probably looking at the end of October. I didn't check the date myself.
Could you have that date for our next council meeting?
Sure.
So we can, and maybe put it in the paper?
It is in the paper.
Well, I didn't see it.
And it's on the website.
Oh, good. I didn't even get to see the paper, so that explains that. Okay, good.
What happened on West Lake Street by Denny's? Is that a water main break?
No, it was another sanitary sewer lateral collapse that needed to be repaired.
Oh.
And then when they got in there and they started working on it, they noted that the water service was lead, so they did both. They replaced the lead water service and they replaced the sanitary sewer lateral.
Okay.
We're going to find more of that as we go along, aren't we?
Yeah.
So when we do South Main, most of that will be automatically replaced when we open up the street?
All of it will be replaced as we put in new water and new sewer. So yeah, that'll all be right out to the property lines, then anything beyond the property line is the property owner's responsibility.
I'll have to have a sewer party. Yay, end of the sewer digups.
I thought you mentioned also during some of our meetings that we would notify those homeowners if we saw that their service was lead up to the house to give them-
We're required by law to notify them, and ask them to replace it at the same time we do. They're not required to-
Right.
But we have to ask.
Okay.
Is that something that has to be, once a homeowner knows that they have lead pipes, that they have to declare that if they're going to sell their home?
I'm not going to pretend like I know real estate law, but that would be an issue that if you know particularly lead services, if they're old enough that there, there's a lining that builds up within them and kind of keeps the lead from dissolving away, but once you replace that portion, that's the city's with copper, that changes. That copper interacts, and there'll be issues with their lead service unless they change it out. So it's highly recommended that they change it out, but we can't force them.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Steve. Item seven, acceptance of committee minutes. Have before me the Planning Commission meeting of August 26, 2014, and the LD Fargo Library meeting of August 18, 2014. They'll go on record as read.
I just want to compliment the library, I think they're doing a really nice job of bringing programs and doing book clubs, and it's a very active library. And I just thought I'd mention that since we had library minutes tonight.
Item eight, council business. The work committee and appointments, and I don't see any, we don't have any, do we, Betsy? Nope, none. Miscellaneous license, Betsy, would you read? Did you see one?
Yes, one. Alicia Linsmire.
I make a motion to approve the tavern operator's license application for Alicia Linsmire.
And do we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Betsy, would you call the vote?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item C is motion 1014, I'm sorry, motion 1410-1-1. This is the approving, planning, and goal-setting report. Betsy, if you would.
Motion 1410-1-1, approving the planning and goal-setting report, whereas council members are committed to developing an overall vision and mission of the city, and whereas the report is designed to establish a framework for planning and goal-setting by the community in an efficient and effective manner while maintaining long-term organizational stability by having a clearly stated vision and mission established, and whereas the council desires to establish strategic issues to clarify the criteria to be followed with respect to the most important planning issues and to formalize said criteria into a single policy document. And whereas the council has participated in the planning and goal-setting process and determined the attached report sets the strategic issues and criteria for achieving the desired changes, and whereas the council recognizes the value of the planning and goal-setting report and accepts responsibility for its implementation, now therefore be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills that the council approves the planning and goal-setting report, and the council directs staff to implement the policy. The city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this motion.
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
And discussion?
I just have a question. If this passes, I know there's a copy at the library, there's a copy here. Are those the two sites if people want to see the complete report?
Isn't it online?
It's on the website, too.
It is on the website.
It's under council documents, it's not as a separate document, but it's on the website.
Sounds good.
I would recommend everybody, if you get a chance, to go out and look at it, and if you have any questions, make sure you call somebody. Because we went through this, went through quite a few things, and it's what we, as a council, think is important to the growth of the city, so if you have any comments on it, get back to us.
And that being said, any other comments? Betsy, please call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr? Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, resolution 14-52, authorization to borrow funds. This will be TID District III reimbursement. Betsy, if you would.
Resolution 1452, authorization to borrow funds, TID number three reimbursement. Whereas the city of Lake Mills has determined that the use of tax incremental financing is required to promote development and redevelopment within the city, and whereas the city of Lake Mills has received a request for reimbursement of qualified expenses for infrastructure improvements in TID number three, and whereas the Lake Mill City Council has previously approved a developer's agreement to set forth the terms and amounts for such reimbursements, and whereas the city council deems it necessary and in the best interest of the city that the sum of $80,000 be borrowed for such purposes upon the terms and conditions here and after set forth, now therefore be it resolved that for the purposes here and above set forth, the city manager and finance director treasurer borrow the sum of $80,000, and to evidence such indebtedness, said city manager and finance director treasurer shall make, execute, and deliver to Greenwood St. Bank for and on behalf of the city and the promissory note of the city to be dated October 21, 2014, in said amount with interest at the rate of 3 percent per annum over five years maturity period.
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
And this resolution was the one that was, not the one in your packet, but the one that was on the table, and has the dates and the, all the blanks filled in. Any discussion? If not, Betsy, would you call the vote?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Brings us to item E, which is resolution 14-53, approval of Title VI Plan Shared Ride Taxi.
Make a motion to approve resolution 1453? Or do you want to read it first?
Let's read it first.
Okay.
Resolution 1453, approving the Title VI Non-Discrimination Program Limited English Proficiency Plan, whereas the United States Department of Transportation regulations require the city of Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi to establish and maintain a Title VI Plan to carry out U.S. Department of Transportation Title VI Regulations, 49 CFR Part 21, and to integrate into its programs and activities considerations expressed in the department's policy guidance concerning recipients' responsibilities to limited English proficient persons, 70 FR 74087, December 14, 2005. And whereas the Title VI Non-Discrimination Program Limited English Proficiency Plan has been developed for the city of Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi, which aims to meet these requirements, and whereas the city of Lake Mills as recipient of federal grant funds operates the Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi without regard to race, color, and national origin in accordance with the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, no person will be excluded for participation in being denied the benefit of or otherwise subjected to discrimination under any city of Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi program or activity regardless of funding source. And whereas the city of Lake Mills as recipient of federal grant funds to operate the Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi intends that any agencies or firms with whom the city contracts on behalf of the Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi comply with the Title VI plan as appropriate, and the city of Lake Mills will take reasonable steps to ensure such compliance, and now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills approves the city of Lake Mills Share Ride Taxi Title VI Non-Discrimination Program Limited English Proficiency Plan.
So at this point, Diane, motion of acceptance?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1453.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I had a, sorry, I keep forgetting there's a microphone here. I did have a couple of questions on this, and just trying to understand some of the descriptions in here, and everything is very generic, and obviously generic makes it easier, but what are we asking them to do? Are we asking them to put technology into the vehicle? And if so, does that come out of funds that we give them because we offset some of that cost, or what are we looking at?
No, we're not asking them to put technology in the vehicles. This whole plan comes from the state, giving us a template and helping us in guidance on what's supposed to happen. What is in the vehicles is a card that does discuss the rights of individuals as far as the Title VI goes. We do, we are required to put this plan on our website, there is a complaint form that you found in here, that is available on our website, as well as people can call or come in and receive that information. This is just a guideline what the federal government is requiring that the city, as a recipient of federal funds for this taxi grant, are required to have this, and the state is just assisting us in developing the program, implementing, and when it's talking about the limited English proficiency-
Yep.
-there is a threshold where we, if we have enough population, then we are required to have documentation in whatever language is prominent besides English. We do not meet that threshold.
So it's more about documentation and placards and things that are in the vehicle more than somebody getting in the vehicle and-
Not speaking.
-has very poor English skills and can't tell them where to go.
Right, right.
Okay.
And the taxi cab service has said that there hasn't been any instances of the need either.
Sure.
So that's a good thing to have.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Any other discussion? Betsy, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed by four zero.
Okay, brings us to item F, this is resolution 14-54, acquisition of property rights and approving, approval of offering price and submittal report for BCS. What is BCS?
It is a-
BSC.
BSC.
It's a land holding company that owns-
Oh, okay, that's right.
They own several lots up there that include, like the veterinary clinic and sun tanning and-
So Betsy, would you read this without a legal description of the property?
Oh, come on.
I'm a little tongue-tied today as it is.
Some guy worked hard at writing that.
That is a real doozy.
Yeah.
That is.
Resolution 1454, concerning the acquisition of property rights from BSC of Lake Mills LLC and approving the offering price and submittal report, whereas the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has determined it is necessary to construct Elm Street between Pine Street and Tyranina Park Road, and whereas said construction will necessitate the acquisition of 0.212 acres of fee titled land for right-of-way and 0.036 acres temporary limited easement from BSC of Lake Mills LLC for construction purposes over and above a portion of the following described premises due to it. Also a temporary limited easement for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purposes the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right of ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable, in the following described tract. Whereas the fee titled land is for public right-of-way, and the temporary limited easement is for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purposes the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon, and the right to ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable, and whereas the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property to be prepared by its consulting appraiser, and whereas the city has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to offer to purchase the fee titled land and temporary easement from the owners of such property, and to take such other actions as deemed necessary to acquire the temporary easement for the purposes of constructing the improvement. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby declare and determine that the fee titled land and temporary easement to construct the Elm Street extension is- the Elm Street extension is necessary. Be it further resolved that the City Manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city the offering price and submittal report with total damages of forty-seven thousand five hundred.
Do we have a motion of acceptance of Resolution fourteen dash fifty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Steve?
This is consistent with what we did on Birch and two we've already done on Elm. In this situation, we are buying land. This is the first one where we've actually bought land on Elm Street. This one is actually outside of what was the original proposed right-of-way because of stormwater detention requirements that we needed to accomplish. So if you read the report that showed the stormwater detention basins, and we did the stormwater detention basins in a fashion that allowed us to access the road from all the properties. So it kind of split the basins up and, but we needed to do that because the amount of stormwater available on North Main Street is not substantial, and there was a lot of stormwater coming here, so we had to have some level of stormwater control. So a substantial part of this is buying land for stormwater detention basin, and then the rest is easements. And some of it is the easement to run the pipe from the stormwater basins to North Main Street to tie into that storm sewer system there. This is the beginning. This basically allows me to sign the offer sheet. Now that will allow the consultant to approach the landowners and start negotiating. The price may go up some depending on negotiations, and sometimes there are some other issues that can involve, they provide additional information that generates a higher value for some reason. At some point, if we can't come to an agreement, we do a jurisdictional offer, we get, we file with the court, and we get the property, then they have their right to take us to court or mediation, depending on which route they decide to go, to try and negotiate the price.
Let's hope it doesn't go to that.
We've had one so far, but all the other ones have been good.
Let's see if you would.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item G is Resolution fourteen dash fifty-five, says the Acquisition of Property Rights and Approval of Offering Price and Submittal Report for Thomas and Coral Becker at eight-eleven North Main Street. Betsy, would you read the, and again, don't read the description.
Thank you. Resolution fourteen fifty-five, Concerning the Acquisition of Property Rights from Thomas and Coral Becker and Approving the Offering Price and Submittal Report. Whereas the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has determined it is necessary to construct Elm Street between Pine Street and Tyranina Park Road. And whereas that said construction will necessitate the acquisition of six hundred and ten square feet of temporary limited easement from Thomas and Coral Becker for construction purposes over and above a portion of the following described premises to it. A temporary limited easement for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purposes the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right to ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable. And then it describes the property. Whereas the temporary limited easement is for the right to construct, cut, and/or fill slopes, including for such purposes the right to operate the necessary equipment thereon and the right to ingress and egress as long as required for such public purpose, including the right to preserve, protect, remove, or plant thereon any vegetation that the highway authorities may deem necessary or desirable. And whereas the city has caused an appraisal of the subject property to be prepared by its consulting appraiser. And whereas the city has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to offer to purchase the temporary limited easement from the owners of such property and to take such other actions as are deemed necessary to acquire the temporary easement for the purposes of constructing the improvements. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby declare and determine that the temporary limited easement to construct the Elm Street extension is necessary. Be it further resolved that the City Manager is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city the offering price and submittal report with total damages of three hundred
Do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
Steve?
This is very limited easement. It's a temporary easement, it's relatively small, it's at the corner there where we'll be doing some work on the detention basin, so there may be some grading issues, but it's pretty small. So as noted, it's only a three hundred dollar expense. So other than that, it's pretty basic.
Anything else? Let's see if you would.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
This is item H, Ordinance eleven thirty-six, Amending the Ethics Code Financial Disclosure Requirement. This is the first reading. Just, I guess, just read the title? Is that what we normally do for the first reading? Just read the title, Betsy?
Yeah, it's awfully long.
Oh, the title?
I can summarize what it's about after she reads the title.
Okay.
Ordinance eleven thirty-six, Amending the Ethics Code Financial Disclosure Requirements.
You'll notice that most of the language in the ordinance is regular font, but there are some sections that are in bold, and it's only the bold print sections that are changes to the existing ordinance. Otherwise, it just repeats the existing ordinance. So even though it's two and a half pages long, we're only talking about one paragraph and a portion of a paragraph. And they are, they are under paragraph G, which is Form of Statement. This is the Financial Disclosure Statement that all elected officials and a number of other individuals have to fill out once a year. And the additional language that hadn't existed in the ordinance prior to this is in number three, the identity of every organization of which she or he or an adult member of her or his immediate family is an officer or director, and the identity of every organization of which she or he or any member of her or his immediate family owns or controls directly or indirectly, severally or in aggregate, at least five percent of the outstanding equity provided however that membership only in, provided however that membership only in an organization need to be disclosed. So this is saying what also has to be disclosed on the Statement of Interest Form. The ordinance was sponsored by Council Representative Steve Kerkovic, and prior to it being introduced to the council, Mr. Kerkovic asked me to meet with the Ethics Board so that they could weigh in on the ordinance language. And this was their recommendation. It had been originally three percent of the outstanding equity. The Ethics Board recommended changing it to five percent, so it was consistent with other parts of the Ethics Code. And then the only other change on the disclosures, the Statement of Interest, would be paragraph number four. Currently, the identity of real estate within the City of Lake Mills or within one and a half miles of the boundary of the city needs to be disclosed. The change would be rather than within the City of Lake Mills or within one and a half miles of the boundary of the city, it's been expanded to all of Jefferson County. So if you own land anywhere in Jefferson County, you need to disclose that, rather than just sticking with the city limits and one and a half miles from the city limits. Those were the changes that they recommended. The proposal was based on an ordinance that had been brought to the council several years ago, in which a number of items were removed from that proposed ordinance. This is what remains from what had been removed. There were a couple of paragraphs that were in the proposed ordinance before it went to the Ethics Board that, because I was told to do it identically, to see what the Ethics Board thought about it, there were some, two paragraphs that had to do with debts and assets. Those were removed by the Ethics Board. They felt that that was a little bit more invasive than it needed to be. I think one of the concerns is getting people to want to run for office or to, I believe that this only deals with city officials who are appointed as employees and elected as council members. And contractors of the City of Lake Mills, for instance, like our contracted planner, contracted engineer, that carry out their duties, they would also need to disclose things. Or our building inspector, that might be a closer case, and the assessor. So if they had those kinds of interests, they would need to fill out this as well. And there, a Statement of Interest Form is in your packet. It's the modification of the form that currently exists that adds paragraph, I think it was three, and the modified paragraph four from that section, yeah. And otherwise, everything else in that section of the Ethics Code remains the same as it currently exists. And I don't know if Mr. Kerkovic, if you wanted to add anything?
Sure. Actually, the reason I asked for this, I know years ago, this probably came before the board and it was voted down, and I looked at the original wording and they wanted to know, it was pretty invasive, aggressive. They wanted to know who your mortgage holder was, your second mortgage holder, your credit cards, all the money you had, any stocks you had anywhere. And so I kind of understood while it was shot down. And I just wanted, I told the Ethics Board, I said, my idea here was to make sure that as an elected official, I disclose if I'm financially or by family tied to a company we're doing business with. That was my objective. And so they looked at it, they went through it, and this is kind of what they came up with.
Yeah.
To keep it simpler, you know, you don't need to put down your financial history, which was what the old one was looking to do. I just wanted to make sure we, as elected officials, disclose if we're tied, so.
And the only thing I'm seeing in here, Steve, that we may want to maybe elaborate on or change, under, under G, item four, the way that reads is a little different than what paragraph four reads on the Statement of Interests. Paragraph four in the Ethics Code doesn't, doesn't spell out that it's other, property other than your primary or principal residence. I think that's the only thing I would maybe look at getting into the, into the Ethics Code, because that is a big, a big difference. Because it says, it says in the, in the code, any, any real estate, but then in our form it says, other than the primary principal resident. So as long as they read the same, I'm fine with either of them, as long as they're the same.
It should read other.
Yeah, I'm just...
It should be other.
It should be other.
Yeah, there's no, your house, your residence isn't the reason to be, is the only reason you can vote and be on the council, so.
Right.
And it's a part of the public record anyways.
So can that get corrected for a second reading? Correct. So would the council want it amended so that paragraph four of the ordinance aligns with paragraph four of the disclosure form?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that amendment that paragraph four also stipulates that this is, the property is, you have to disclose property other than your primary or principal residence within Jefferson County.
Second?
I'll second, yep.
So let's call a vote on the amendment, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Okay, so we have an amendment for, on Ordinance eleven thirty-six, and it'll go on to the second reading. This brings us to item I. This is Ordinance eleven thirty-seven, Amending School Parking Zones. This is the first reading. Betsy, if you'd just read the title?
Ordinance eleven thirty-seven, Amending School Parking Zones.
Diane, why don't you just give us a quick overview, and this was yours, wasn't it?
Well, Vicky had asked if someone would sponsor it. I said I would. But basically, the change is because the opening on Lake Mills Elementary School is no longer on Prospect Street.
Okay.
So we don't need a school zone on that side, and later at some other time, they will ask us to do something that addresses the Pine Street side, but that's not here at this time. So basically, it's deleting the current.
Okay, so Ordinance eleven thirty-seven will go on to the second reading.
And I apologize, I had Rudy Scharr as the sponsor, so I will fix that for the second reading.
Oh, maybe I did.
Sorry. I don't know, I think I might have pulled from an old ordinance and forgot to change it to Diane. And I also see a typo under Prospect Street East. It was hard to see because of it being crossed out, but it's, it's east rather than east, so I'll just make that typo correction. We don't have to have that be amended. I'll just bring it back in that form next time.
Having said that, we'll go to item J, Ordinance eleven thirty-eight, Amending Council Vice President Duties and Compensation. This is the first reading. Diane, just, just give us, read the title, I'm sorry.
Ordinance eleven thirty-eight, Amending Council Vice President Compensation and Duties.
Now, Diane, just a quick overview.
Yeah, well, when we were doing our goal setting, one of the things that came out of that was the fact that we thought somebody should be responsible to keep us on track with the goal setting. And the suggestion was, well, maybe this is a job for the Vice President, at which time I piped up and said, okay, fine, but then let's give the Vice President a little bit more money than the regular council members, because I think we're underpaying the Vice Presidency. The reason, besides that specific duty, was the fact that the Vice President, whoever he or she is, needs to be able to pick up the meeting at a moment's notice, has to be ready to do that at any time, and has to be able to run the meeting in the absence of the President. And I just feel that that, that does warrant a little money, and that's what this is, is a little money.
Good.
And Vicky can speak to it from there. Okay, yeah, the difference in the salary is three hundred dollars a year, and it's effective on May first, two thousand and fifteen. And the reason that date is selected is that no one knows at this point, if you were to adopt this, who that Vice President's going to be next year. So you're allowed to fix the salary of someone without necessarily fixing it for yourself. So it's fine, and that's why I selected that date. And then the paragraph E simply just talks about reporting, tracking and reporting periodically on the progress the city council is making on that goal-setting report that you approved earlier tonight.
Okay, having said that, Ordinance eleven thirty-eight goes on to the second reading. Brings us to Ordinance eleven thirty-nine. This is item K, Title X Zoning Code and Map. This is the first reading. Betsy, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance eleven thirty-nine, Recreating Title X Zoning Regulations and Improving Zoning Map.
And this is on the website. I know there's been, there's been numerous public hearings on, on these different sections on here, so I encourage the public to definitely get on the website, read this over, and get with us if you, if there's something you don't like, or go to the...
Can, can we bring up something tonight?
Sure.
But that would be, now, make sure I'm right, because I told you, I might not be totally with it tonight here, but that goes with this, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I do have a question for you, and I'm hoping one of you can help clear it up for me. I was looking through it, and I saw the diagram on page, on section two-two, chapter two, page two. So it's, at the bottom, it says two dash two. There's a diagram at the top of that page, figure two dash one, Acceptable Location of Accessory Structure in a Residential District. Now, I'm looking at this, and you got to understand, this is not my forte here, okay? But in looking at this, it says in the diagram, Main Street down in the bottom, a side street on one side and a side street on the other, and some...
on one side and a side street on the other, and some sample lots. That's what I'm looking at, right?
Yep.
So the one to the left, if you're coming from, like you read a book, I understand that one because being a corner lot, you know, I think that looks just fine. I think that's kind of what we have now. And then you come to the next one, and I'm looking at that... Is that picture in there backwards? Because it's got the accessory structure. From what I see, it looks like we've got something like a little building up at the sidewalk line, or something close to that, with the house set back. Now, and the same with the next one, and I'm going... I thought maybe those two were in there accidentally backwards.
Nope.
No, and they're at the setback line, not at the sidewalk line.
Okay, but they're in front of the house.
They're in front of the house, as long as they aren't covering more than twenty-five percent of the front of the house.
Okay, but why would we want... I thought it was a mistake. Why would we want accessory buildings in the front of a lot?
It's meant for a garage.
Huh?
It's meant for a garage.
Oh, it's not like a...
Right, no, it's meant for garaging.
Oh, okay, it is a garage. It'll look like a garage.
That's what this is meant for, for garages.
Okay, accessory structure did not mean garage to me.
Right, it's for folks that don't have garages and how they can put one into their property if they don't have one.
So there would be a driveway leading into that building? Okay. Well, there's a big difference between a garage and an accessory structure.
Yes, you're right.
I guess I would like to see...
You're thinking a shed?
Yeah, that's what I thought that was, and I'm going, that's got to be in there upside down. You know, I just thought it was a graphic issue.
You're right, yeah, it is for garages, and I think this diagram went through, gosh, like six, seven rebuilds just while I was on the Plan Commission.
If you go on B, on the other side of the industrial area, some of those houses are the backyard, others, right next to it, is the front yard. So, I mean, it just...
But I don't necessarily like that. I mean, I don't think that is the most aesthetic use of... You know, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I'm looking for the future, okay, right? We're not going to go change somebody's house. If it's there, it's grandfathered in. But what I'm saying is, when it said accessory structure, can that somehow... And maybe it's clear to everybody but me, and that's... I'll accept that. But I'm just fearful that someone's going to come and say, "I want to put up a..." You know, what are they called, those little buildings that are where you put your lawnmower and stuff, but not a car?
Just a shed.
A shed. Yeah, now, could these be sheds, is what I'm saying, by the way it is defined now?
Yes.
I can't go along with that as a shed. I don't think I want sheds at the road. Drive... A garage is fine.
It's not at the road, it's at the setback.
But it's on Main Street, right here, on the street. You've got it... I don't want to see a shed in the front yard.
Well, now, if you go back one page, you see the rules on the structure where it says it's got to complement the house. I mean, you can't just put up a plywood shed. It's got to complement the house, the roofline, and everything else has got to match, so it could be a garage. It doesn't say that, but the structure wouldn't just be thrown together.
You couldn't go to Menards and bring one and set it down there? You sure? I'm just saying, I'm playing devil's advocate here.
I don't think you could.
Well, I'm just... That's my concern. That's all I want to say tonight, because I thought they literally were in backwards, so... Okay, thank you.
Okay, so anything else? All right, Ordinance eleven thirty-nine will go on record as going to the second reading now.
Do we have a public hearing at the next meeting on this? Correct. So anybody... It's online, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you have something, next meeting is your chance to come and speak on whatever, pro, con, whatever.
Yeah, it goes to item I is Ordinance eleven forty. This is Title XI subdivision regulations. This is the first reading. Betsy, if you'd read that, please?
You want just the title again?
Just the title, I'm sorry.
Ordinance eleven forty, recreating Title XI subdivision regulations.
And that's also a little light reading. It's also on the website.
Light reading?
And a lot of time and effort has gone into this.
Yeah.
There have been a lot of public input, or I guess...
A lot of public input and a lot of Plan Commission time.
Okay, so do look it over, and if you have any issues, there'll be another public hearing.
Mr. Schar? I just wanted to inquire whether the council also got a standalone version of the zoning map with your packet?
Yes, it's in the back.
Good. Just want to make sure you had it.
Yep. Okay, anything else on eleven forty? If not, we'll go on to the second reading. This brings us to item nine, recommendations for future agendas. And I guess the first thing that comes to my mind is another work session.
Yep, I was going to say, it's on my notes, too.
Yeah, I thought tonight's was real productive. I learned a lot. I think Steve does a wonderful job in preparing them. I don't think they get better than what you prepare, Steve.
So we got... We're on right now October the seventh. We have another meeting on the twenty-first.
Do a six o'clock again?
Do a six. Steve, what do you think? Is that going to... How's that going to...
Another hour, or do we need more than that? We need...
What do we need? How much more time we're going to need?
You're the ones that have to tell me. I mean, if you see anything you want to go over, work on specifically, any other... I mean, I've pretty much covered the outstanding issues tonight.
Yeah, and with the... I think if it's okay, let's... Can we just do a... We'll do another one on the twenty-first and then see where we're at? Would that be acceptable?
At six o'clock?
Six o'clock?
Yeah, another six o'clock.
Is that hard, Steve, for you to get there?
I got here.
Yeah, you did. I'm just saying, is it really hard? I mean, it's six fifteen better, because it sounds like maybe...
No, you know what? But then you don't... Forty-five minutes, an hour's good.
Okay, got it. If you can't get here, get here when you can get here. I mean...
I will do that.
You know, that's what life's about.
So twenty-first, Betsy, at six?
No, don't do that. Yeah.
Anything else?
Nothing that I can think of, but I'm not totally...
Staff, we have anything that needs to come up?
Budget public hearing will be... Should be at the first meeting in November, which is November fourth. We could hold it at the second meeting, which would be the eighteenth. But we can't hold it any later than the eighteenth, because unless we hold a special meeting in November, that'd be around Thanksgiving.
Okay, so if we need another work session, we'll have to do it sometime in October.
I don't see us needing... I don't see us needing another one after the six o'clock one coming up.
I don't have my...
I mean, do we have to have three?
No.
No.
Okay.
And we could still get in three, because if we go to the public hearing and we want to make any amendments coming out of the public hearing, we could hold one on the eighteenth at six o'clock and finalize before we go to the final reading and...
Let's just do that, Rudy.
Yeah. It's acceptable, everybody? Betsy, do you get all the...
Yep.
Okay. Brings us to item ten. Need a motion to convene in closed session, or... Let me read the...
You got to read it.
Let me read it so I don't get in trouble. Convene to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-one, paragraph one-E, deliberating and/or negotiating the purchase of public properties or the investing of public funds when bargaining reasons require closed meeting.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, Betsy, would you call the vote?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four-zero.
We adjourn to closed session. Just take a quick break, and we'll meet in the other room.